Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight is a town hall meeting that I think will be the first of four or five similar town hall meetings throughout Mendocino County because the county general plan is in the process of being updated. And some very wonderful, talented, experienced, knowledgeable, local people have created this document. And the purpose of this evening is to bring the process of the county general plan together with this document in the hopes that the issues, the policies, discussion in this document will be very seriously considered by our elected board of supervisors. The agenda for tonight was going to have five panelists. Tonight we have only four because Cliff Pollan, our fifth panelist, a lawyer who is going to speak to the legal aspects, issues, ramifications, processes of the general plan, general plans, county general plans in general. But he fell ill and he sends his apologies. And we'll get a DVD of this evening. This evening is being recorded, not live, though it could be, but it is being live switched, so it is being edited with three cameras. And it will be shown tonight on Willett's Public Access Channel 3 at 9:00, 9:30, whenever we're done. And it will be broadcast. And I think that's very exciting. The agenda for tonight with our four panelists now will be in four segments. The first segment will be the panelists themselves, one, two, three, and four, talking about various aspects of this entire process. Patrick Ford will talk about what the general plan is. Brian Corzilius will give a summary, an overview, some insight into this document in general and why these people spent so much time putting it together. Steve Heckeroff will talk about a number of key elements that need to be underlined that are discussed in this document. And finally, Kate Collins will talk about outreach, media, and how to talk about this and what you can do to advance those issues and those policies in which you believe are very, very important for the supervisors to take under consideration. The second segment of this evening will be fifteen, twenty minutes of the panelists themselves asking questions of each other. Never seen a segment like that, and I think that might prove interesting. If there isn't any questions, we'll move it on to the third section, which is Q and A. Time for you to give your brief and concisely stated questions or comments, and perhaps the panelists, or perhaps some of you, will have some answers, similarly brief. The last section is also a new type of segment that I hope proves advantageous for us. Highlights, key points, not a summary of what happened tonight, but notes from all about what you learned or what you think should be shared. And we'll see how much time that takes. So it's a chance for any of you to underline, to underscore, things that you felt were very important for whatever reason. So why don't we begin with Patrick? And we'll go from there. And I warn everybody, I will be the timekeeper, and if you wonder, if your comment rambles, I will simply interrupt you as nicely as I can so that we can keep the evening moving along. Okay? So with that, I'll introduce Patrick Ford.
Hi, I'm Patrick. My mind's a little bit floppy here. I'm Patrick Ford. I'm an employee of Mendocino County. I work for the Mendocino County Planning Team, which is the agency that is tasked with the responsibility of preparing the general plan as well as the UVAP. And in the future, we'll also do the coastal element update and the housing element. We deal with all of the long-range plans for the county. I'm going to talk about specifically how the planning process works from the government side and specifically about the general plan itself and try and integrate how energy relates to that. The county Mendocino deals with the subject of energy in three principal ways. We're one of the largest purchasers of energy in the county. We deal with energy in terms of building codes, how the county permits the buildings, both public and private. And then the third way we deal with energy is through long-range planning. At the preparation of our long-range plans, discuss energy as well. I'll get back to the first two, if there's time permitting, about the direct purchases and building code, but I really want to focus my comments on the general plan, as this is where the discussion is going to be in tonight. The general plan is a state mandated duty that all jurisdictions have to do. The California Supreme Court best called this "the constitution of future development for jurisdictions," and has outlined, between the legislator and the courts, have outlined three key aspects of a general plan. It has to be comprehensive, it has to be consistent, and it has to be long-term. What I mean by comprehensive, it has to have a geographical, a broad geographical scope. It's got to cover everywhere inside the jurisdiction. It also has to cover a broad range of topics. It has to be consistent. You have various different aspects of a general plan, they have to agree with each other. Otherwise, it is found, the courts have found, will find it legally inconsistent, and you don't have a general plan. And then, of course, finally, it has to be long-term. When I say long-term, it's got to look longer than five years into the future. Typically, it's about twenty to twenty-five years, though some have gone as low as fifteen-year general plan, and some jurisdictions as high as forty. Typically, it's twenty years. The state also requires that all general plans must have seven key areas discussed. The state calls them elements, and you'll hear this term a lot tonight. The seven elements are land use, which is, deals with your zoning, your organization of your land, your classifications. Another very key part is circulation. This is how you get about from point A to point B, and it covers roads, rail, airport, harbors, as well as your public transportation. It doesn't always get into specifics, and other agencies do take care of the funding, the other aspects of transportation planning, but your general plan does outline where you want to, how you want to be able to get back and forth. The third aspect is the housing element. This is the only element that the state actually mandates frequent updates to. The state requires that the housing element, which deals with housing aspects, be updated every five years. The fourth and fifth one are fairly close together. One's called conservation element, the other one's called open space. Conservation deals with the protection of natural habitat, resources, environment, and open space deals with agriculture, timber, and recreational lands. Sixth is noise element, and seventh is safety. All plans have to have this. You also can have, jurisdictions can incorporate up to sixteen other areas, such as water quality, air quality. They also need to be able to, they can take economic and even energy as their optional elements. They're not required to do this under California law, but they are, it is an option. Our county also has the responsibility of preparing coastal element as well, because we are part of the, we're on the coastline. Plans also include, general plans can typically also include specific area plans. What is a good example, this is the Brook Trail Specific Plan and the one that's underway for the Ukiah Valley Area Plan. These are specific plans that get into a level of detail not found in a general plan. The state does not, other than the housing element, the state does not require you update your plan on a regular interval. Housing element, of course, is every five years. Ours is due for another update in 2009 for the housing element. Counties, optional way, an optimal way the counties do it is they prepare a twenty-year plan and update it every ten years. Some counties wait till the conclusion of the general plan, other counties have gone well past. Tulare County went forty years between the update of their general plan. So the California law does not require general plan, the elements of a general plan actually be addressed in elemental form. In other words, you don't have to have a circulation element, a housing element. You can mix and match as long as the subject matter is covered within the document itself. They can be mixed and matched and recombined. Some elements can be updated as part of the general plan update, others can be updated on their own timetable. It is flexible, and that's important to stress. So that's the generalities of a general plan. For our county, I'd like to talk about where we are on our general plan process. It's easier to tell you what we're not updating at the moment. We are not updating any of the specific plans, though the Ukiah Valley Area Plan is proceeding concurrent with the general plan on its own timetable. The county will be updating its housing element in 2009, and at the conclusion of the general plan process, the specific elements such as the Brook Trail Plan, the Anderson Valley, any of the specific area plans will also be examined to make sure they're consistent with the general plan. Again, plans have to be consistent. And then finally, we will do our coastal element probably next year as well. So what are we doing? The, as I said, we are not doing separate element structure to our general plan, and there's two good reasons why. Typically, our planners will go and refer to the land use element most frequently, and some of the side elements can be put on a shelf and ignored. We would like a lot of the salient issues to be incorporated within the broad body of the plan. The other reason is energy and other issues like water, air quality are integral to a lot of different functions that the state requires us to talk about. It's better if we talk about it within the context of a general plan. Our general plan has just two elements, fundamental elements that we are working on, a development element and a resource management element. This is the heart of the general plan. Also included in the general plan are specific policies that pertain to each community planning area. It also includes the elements that are not being updated. They all collectively become part of the general plan, as well as it includes the various topics that we want to talk about, whether it's an interest of political interest or community interest, the issues that are important at the moment. Specifically, our development element deals with the land, the four, the four of the, four or five of the state's mandated elements are discussed in the development element, which is land use, circulation, noise, and safety. The resource management element has conservation and open space talked about within it. As mentioned, there are no other separate elements. The issue of water, the very important issue of water, is being split between both the development element and the resource management element. And the issues, other issues such as energy can also likewise be, will be discussed in the development element as it pertains to the infrastructure, and in the resource management element as it pertains to energy resources that are available to us. The key dates of the general plan update, this is a process that is still anticipated concluding summer of 2008, with a draft general plan release late 2007 or early 2008. Key upcoming dates, the planning commission has been working through the general plan, trying to provide guidance and shape the general plan. The board supervisors will be asked to provide a recommendation on it. The next meeting coming up on the general plan for the planning commission is June 28th, which is actually this week, where they will talk probably about six or seven key issues. For example, SB 18, which deals with Native Americans. We'll also be talking about clustering. We don't anticipate talking about energy at this one. Another meeting specifically on energy and energy policy and recommendations is scheduled, or tentatively scheduled, for July 19. And that is like the third week of July. And this is where the planning commission will actually deal with the subject of energy, and it will probably be the only thing on the agenda for the general plan aspects. And then we have tentatively scheduled with the board of supervisors, a meeting on the 24th of July. And this will talk about the general plan and provide them with an update of the whole process as it currently stands. So that pretty much wraps up what I have to talk about. If we want to get back to the other issues of how the county deals with energy, I invite that to happen during the question and answer phases of this, but I've concluded my remarks about.
Thank you very much, Patrick. So that was the general plan, and now here's the document. Brian Corzilius.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming. In the fall of 2006, the Mendocino Board of Supervisors authorized the creation of an energy task force to help develop a set of energy policies for the county's general plan. The task force was created from citizens throughout the local area that had previously shown a role in energy within the county, and this became known as the Energy Working Group, and first met in November 2006. And one of the first tasks we undertook was to conduct an energy inventory, it wasn't just energy, it was actually energy and climate emissions, climate change emissions, greenhouse gas emissions, whichever language you choose. We wanted to assess where the county was at right now, how much energy was being used in the county, and where that money was going to. And that was completed in January 2007. This inventory was quite an eye-opener. It showed us that we were spending, in 2002, $156 million on energy, which worked out to roughly nineteen percent of the after-tax median household income for Mendocino residents. With the increases in energy costs since 2002, this has now grown to somewhere above thirty-one percent of the median after-tax income. The largest component of this energy use turned out to be, as we all know, fifty-nine percent to transportation. We know about transportation, I'll figure. And the second largest, twenty percent, was for electricity. In terms of greenhouse gas emissions by in-county activities, we release annually over a million tons of CO2 equivalents, and this works out to thirty tons per household. The major sources of these emissions were in the order of transmission fuels, fifty-one percent, electricity, seventeen percent, heating fuels, thirteen percent. And this goes all the way into agricultural and so forth. The whole inventory is available online. If somebody's interested, I can give you that website, or it's actually up here. Following the completion of the inventory, the group towards assessing, turned towards assessing the future trends in energy availability and the looming state and federal mandates that we're seeing come down concerning greenhouse gas emissions. We wanted to see what was coming down, how it might impact the county and so forth. Investigating these trends pointed out some troubling facts. Current discussions at the federal level as well as the rest of the world are pushing for carbon taxes and a greatly reduced use of looting technologies. The impact on us will be the driving up of costs of energy, the impact of the cost of basic household goods, and of course, personal transportation. At the same time, we're seeing trends that, or indications that climate change will potentially reduce food production and seriously threaten water availability. In the coming decade, we're probably going to see gasoline reaching $10 a gallon, which will impact our individual ability to get to work, to go shopping, it will drive up our food costs. American food production and distribution rely heavily on fossil fuels, accounting for nearly seventeen percent of the U.S. energy consumption. Because of this, higher oil and natural gas prices are expected to lead to a decline in the amount and variety of food produced and available to us. Electricity was another area of impact we noticed. In California, the majority of our electricity is produced by natural gas, but eighty-seven percent of that is imported from outside of the state. When we looked at these, this is just a cursory overview of the kinds of things we looked into, we ended up translating these concerns into six primary areas of focus. One was transportation, including public transit. Two is development practices. Three was energy conservation. Four was local energy production. Five was agriculture and local food production. And six was local in-community employment. The biggest issue and consumer of energy is transportation. What we looked at is creating policies that encourage infill of existing communities, mixed use of buildings, that's businesses, for example, on the ground floor, apartments above. The co-location of industries so the heating and cooling, waste streams could be shared. These together dealt with how to reduce the length of time of commuting, the amount of transportation expenditures that we have just to get back and forth to work. We also looked at the aspect that we have alternative routes through this county, i.e. the rail, that fairly inexpensively, we could use, we could put electric trolleys to work moving rapidly through the major centers of Ukiah, Willett's, Fort Bragg, and having short-haul buses within them. So we could address some of the major commuting areas, which is not a non-trivial solution. We also looked at the creation of county-wide agency funded from within the county to provide energy audits to homes and businesses, because this would enable us to easily implement conservation and continue to upgrade conservation measures. Because conservation is really one of our most effective means of reducing the energy costs, both on a personal or a business level. Taking this a step further, we examined the possibility of the county promoting a transition to a community-owned utility. Basically, it means we, the county, become the utility instead of PG&E. We could purchase blocks of power at reduced cost, i.e. at a discount, passing that on to the consumer, perhaps taking a small piece of that, a half cent per kilowatt, using that to fund these programs that would provide the ability of conservation of energy, some of the upgrades to the county and so forth, without having to effectively increase our taxes, our property taxes. In addition, Mendocino County, we're beginning to develop its own power generation capabilities, and there's a high potential here for solar, wind, wave, and biomass. Groups such as Northern California Power Authority have shown interest in purchasing that electricity because it's renewable, and, which is another source of funding for creating our own power generation facilities here. When we do that, if we create our own power generation within the county, the funds we expend currently, as I said earlier, nearly three hundred million a year in this county at present-day prices, leave the county. But the more we can generate here in the county, the more it stays in the county, the more it supports local employment and the security of the county itself. Lastly, we examined the issue of agriculture. And the average food today, and this is a pretty well-known statistic, so I hope I'm not shocking, but here, but it travels nearly fifteen hundred miles. And the figure is somewhere between ten and four hundred calories per every calorie you consume is what it costs to produce that food. The average town has no more than a three-day supply of food than stores here. So we look at these issues, and we realize that small-scale local agriculture is one of the policies we need to promote. It's less energy-intensive in terms of machinery, fertilizers, pesticides, and the distance it needs to travel to the market. And this translates into land use and planning policies, i.e. minimum parcel sizes, agricultural incentives, and the possibility of intentional farming communities. By doing this, we could make it affordable for small-scale farming and have local foods that greatly reduce costs and increase nutritional value. In writing this report and making the policy recommendations that we did to the county, and this is the format in which the report was presented to the county supervisors and commissioners, our goal was not to change individual lifestyles, but rather to suggest policy that will mitigate or reduce the economic impacts from impending legislation and the direct impacts of declining petroleum and climate change. The economics of spiraling energy prices and climate change mitigation measures, we're already feeling them today. And in this respect, what we're trying to do is suggest policies that will keep the money we spend on energy, transportation, and food circulating here in our local economy. These policies will also reduce CO2 emissions and foreign oil dependence while increasing our national security and the quality of resources we depend on, like air, water, and soil. The report incorporates the energy inventory, the energy and emissions inventory for the county. It discusses the future of energy and the impacts of climate change, as well as includes a fairly large section on policy recommendations. And these policy recommendations, in consideration of what Patrick had talked about, cover the entire gamut, because the, energy is so intricately woven into everything we do that the recommendations are just all over the map as far as the general plan itself. The report was actually written primarily to distribute to the board of supervisors, the planning commissioners, and the planning department itself. We initially were asked to meet for a six-month period of time. We felt that the impact of what we had found in the recommendations needed to get out to the community. And that's why we created, through a group of very dedicated people, an outreach version of the document. It's the same report, it drops off some of the raw data and so forth. We wanted to make sure the community understood what the recommendations were, and that we could get this into everybody's hands so they could look at it, determine what is dear to their heart, and talk to the supervisors and try to encourage that we start looking forward. Essentially, the bottom line is this, we are facing two crises, upward spiraling energy costs and climate change, and the solutions to each are essentially the same. We need to cut our oil and gas consumption in half within the next ten to twenty years, transforming how energy is used in our transportation, our food supply, our buildings, and manufacturing. If we do not begin to address this now, the economic impact will severely reduce the discretionary income of our fellow citizens, resulting in declining revenues or operating funds for our county government, including social and emergency services. We hope in presenting this to both the board of supervisors and planning commissioners and to you as a community, that we can start discussing these openly and looking at the solutions that we can implement here in the county, improve the security, the independence, and our own future with our personnel.
That was this document and its origination. Now, taking a little bit closer look at some of the key elements of the document itself, is Steve Heckeroff.
And before I say anything, I'd like to recognize and thank any of the county officials and city officials that took the time to come here. We have Johnny Pinches back there, and I really want to thank him for showing up, so, thanks.
I'm the city council, and just before I got here, Ross, the city manager, called to ask the guys to come in. He wanted to come and couldn't. He was very supportive of this.
Thank you very much, also. Well, you might all be surprised that we get almost all our energy from a nuclear power plant that's ninety-three million miles away. And that, that nuclear, the energy from the sun takes eight minutes to get here, and it leaves no radioactive waste. It's been operating pretty flaw- It's been operating pretty flawlessly for four and a half billion years, and its operational life will, is estimated to be another five and a half billion years. So, it's a pretty good machine. It produces three hundred and fifty million terawatt-hours. Terawatt-hour is a trillion watt-hours a year. That's about a billion times more energy than all the power plants in the world, conventional power plants, put together, produce. So, it's a very large source of energy. So, when somebody tells you that we don't use very much solar energy, you can tell them that they really haven't thought too, too well about it. The efficiency, you can, you can think about the efficiency of the energy that we use as how directly we use solar energy. And I always think of using direct solar energy as heating water or photovoltaics. Those are some direct uses of solar energy. When we think about fossil fuels, that's a very indirect use of solar energy. It took about three and a half billion years of photosynthesis to create the carbohydrates that sunk to the bottom of oceans, and then through the movement of the tectonic plates, were deposited and put under pressure, and over hundreds of millions of years turned into what we know as oil and natural gas and coal. And they had to be buried to a certain depth to turn into each of those resources. So, if you consider that all during that time, there was three hundred and fifty trillion watt, three hundred and fifty million terawatt-hours of energy coming in every year, and you multiply three point five billion years times three hundred and fifty million terawatt-hours, you do the math, and you find out that using direct solar energy is over a trillion times more efficient than using fossil fuel. And that's the way we have to start thinking about things, because if you understand the definition of finite, then you understand that fossil fuels are a limited resource, and they took a very long time to create, and we are at about the halfway point in the use of oil. So, with that in mind, we want to think of ways to use direct solar energy as much as possible. Now, you know, a little over a hundred years ago, we were all getting our light from gas lights, and then somebody invented something called electricity. And we've had electric lights for all that time. Well, at the same time, we had electric cars a hundred years ago. In fact, electric cars outnumbered gas cars up until nineteen oh six. In nineteen-ten, the electric starter motor was invented, and that made gas cars much easier to use. You didn't have to tre, uh, stand in front of them and crank them. So, there was a cartel of oil companies, auto manufacturers, rubber manufacturers, and over the years, they have done things like rip up all the light rail systems in the U.S., and that's been documented, and they've been sued for it, and they've paid their penance for, for doing that. And, and now, we have become what our president calls addicted to oil. And that's not because it's efficient, it's by design, because there's a lot of money to be made off of digging something out of the ground and selling it to everybody for a lot of money. But if we start looking, and what the, the, this document is a start toward showing us how to use the sun's energy more directly, and that is the measure of efficiency. The more direct you can use that energy, the more efficient, the more efficiently, and the better chance humanity will have of long-term survival. So, if we can think of things in, in term, in those terms, then we will start moving toward a solar-electric economy. Because we can, we can store energy and electricity from renewables in a lot of different ways. It's a fairly direct source of energy from the sun, as opposed to any fossil fuel. Even biofuels are a very distant cousin to, to getting, to photovoltaics. Photosynthesis is about one percent efficient at creating carbohydrates. To take those carbohydrates and convert them into usable energy takes another, it's about a thirty percent efficient process. So, you have three tenths of one percent efficiency compared to photovoltaics that are ten percent efficient. And in that process, you also have to use a combustion engine, which is only about ten percent efficient. About, yeah, fifteen percent efficient. So, overall efficiency is about sixty to three thousand times more efficient to use an electric vehicle that's solar-charged than it is to use a combustion engine, even with biofuel. So, the key elements of this report that Lanny reminded me I'm supposed to be talking about are, are solving the major issues that, that Brian brought up. In his inventory, we saw that, that fifty-nine percent of our energy use was going toward transportation. So, one of the key elements is creating policies that move us toward a transportation system that both relies less on vehicles by having policies that, that encourage bicycle and pedestrian use in our towns. And any new development, for instance, one of the policies that any new development will have to provide a bicycle path to schools and services as a requirement before they can do that development. And with policies like that, then we can move away from being dependent in designing our cities for cars and start designing them for people. Because we are people, we are not cars, even though a Martian looking down on us may think we were cars. The second one was, was electricity. And again, we, we have many ways in this county. We were blessed with many resources that we can create electricity from renewables. We have wind, we have microhydro, we have wave, and we have lots of sunshine. So, we can use our, our solar energy and our wind energy to create electricity to totally stop burning. So, I, and then the, the third one was for heating. And that's another major policy area where I, I am, using me as an example, I installed a solar water heater about thirty-four years ago with about seventy-five dollars' worth of plumbing parts. And I painted the pipes black and put them on top of a corrugated piece of metal and put a glass sheet over it, and it has provided all our hot water for about nine months out of the year when the sun's shining for a family of six and over, over that period of time, without any other source of energy. And we have coils in our wood stove for the three months when the sun is not shining that goes into the same tank. So, for a seventy-five dollar investment, I've saved about eighteen thousand dollars in utility bills. And so, that's something that everybody can do, and that's the most direct way to use solar energy, is for heating. Those are the three principal areas that the policies are directed toward, along with food, which Brian did a good job of covering. So, I'll, I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you for your attention.
And now, let's find out a bit about how we can outreach, how we can take what we feel is very, very important, the urgency of it, the need, and get it out to the public and ultimately get it into the hands and heads of the supervisors. Because this county plan, this general plan, has a moment in history that I think we cannot wait another twenty years for. And so, to speak to some of those aspects of getting the word out, Kate Collins.
Thank you, Lanny. Good evening. So, when Lanny asked me to come up here and speak about this, I thought, okay, well, what am I going to say? You know, what, how do we, how do we address this? What are we going to do? And what's the issue that we're facing? And really, I think the issue that we're facing is getting the board of supervisors to realize the importance of this. And actually, last week, I was at a LAMAC meeting in Leightonville, and Mr. Pinches very wisely said that to make changes to the general plan after it's been put into effect is both laborious and costly. And he's right, and we agree. And this is exactly why we're seeking to have the energy plan recommendations accepted by the board of supervisors now and adopted into the general plan prior to its completion. Now, the importance of this is manifold. I mean, as we've spoken of, as Patrick said, the general plan is only done every twenty years, okay? So, what we're doing is we're setting policy right now for the next twenty years. These, this is going to be the guideline for our energy use for the next twenty years. This is of vital importance. The other aspect that is very important is if the board of supervisors does not adopt an inclusive energy plan, they can possibly open the county up to litigation. And I bring this up because there is precedent set. In the last year, there has been two suits followed, filed, one against the county of San Bernardino and one against banning California and Riverside County. Now, the first suit was filed in November of last year, and this was filed by the Center for Biological Diversity. This was filed against banning California, and it was for failing to meet the California Environment Quality Act, which is CEQA, failing to meet their requirements when they approved a vast sprawling fourteen hundred home development. Okay, now, CEQA requires a careful examination of greenhouse gas emissions as, on any home development. It also requires that a review is done of the proposed project's effect on wildlife, habitat, and air quality. So, banning chose without the approval, and in fact, in direct conflict to the wishes of its community, of its constituents, as of, of the local businesses and citizenry to go ahead and approve this plan for fourteen hundred homes. And the response was a lawsuit, not by the citizenry of that county, but by an outside agency, okay? The second suit, which really addresses, speaks more to what we're doing here, is actually San Bernardino County. And the attorney general in April of this year filed suit against the county of San Bernardino for not including an inclusive energy plan into their general plan, okay? It filed a suit for not considering the impacts of global warming, okay? Now, after San Bernardino was sued by the attorney general, they were then sued separately by the Center for Biological Diversity, the Sierra Club, and the San Bernardino County Autobon Society, okay? So, the adoption of the energy plan into the general plan at this time, it's in the best interest of our county, it's in the best interest of the board of supervisors, okay? It's not just about the need for the energy plan to guide us. It's also about adhering to the laws set forth by the state of California under CEQA. Now, that said, how do we get this out into the county? How do we get the board of supervisors to listen to us? Because certainly, they're not going to listen to me, you know, I'm just a hippie living up in the hills on my off-grid system, okay? They're not going to listen to a few of us. They're going to listen to five thousand, ten thousand. We have a petition that's up here that we're asking people to sign, and that's what needs to be done. The board of supervisors needs to know that we, the people, that we, the people, believe that this is important, that the energy usage of our county and its future is vital. We are a small county, and we have the ability here to set policy for the next twenty years. Of course, if this energy plan is not adopted at this time, the possibility that as state legislation becomes more strict, as federal legislation is imposed, that we will be forced as a county to adopt in a costly and laborious way, after the effect, an energy plan into the general plan. So, the biggest thing we can do is networking, talking to one another, you know, I mean, I was amazed. I started making calls last week, and I was so surprised, we hadn't even published this. And yet, everybody seemed to know about it. People knew about the meeting, people knew what was going on. The county's abuzz, you know? So, now is the time, and each community needs to own this. That's part of the beauty of local grown programs. So, if you're not from Willets, if you're from Ukiah, if you're from the coast, if you're from Hopland, or Boonville, or Leightonville, you can take this back to your own community. And Lanny has very generously offered to either actually host, facilitate town hall meetings, or to help communities facilitate them themselves. And I would, you know, ask you, if you are interested in spearheading something, something like this, talk to Lanny or talk to one of us, okay? Of course, online is great. A lot of us do the internet thing. There's a piece of paper here, it's also on the outside door, that gives the online address of the petition that needs to be signed, as well as of this little document. So, you can view it online, you can email it to everybody in your address book, okay? And this is only one way to do it. The other aspect is, of course, the media. And media exposure, well, the hotter the topic, the more media exposure. And this topic should be the hottest topic in Mendocino County. It really should. So, you know, it affects not only us, it affects our children, it affects future generations. We are setting the framework which will guide the county for the next twenty years. And I've talked to, oh, well, all of our local media, and they're all on board. I've also talked to media down in the Bay Area, I've talked to media in Santa Rosa. And they're like, really? That's what you guys are doing up there? Well, yeah, send us some information. And we're going to be sending out the disc of this, this meeting tonight. We'll be going out to different news organizations, not just in our county, but outside our county. Because what we're hoping is perhaps if the board of supervisors won't listen to us, well, if we rock the boat a little bit, shake the apple tree, as it were, and get some statewide recognition, board of supervisors might just sit up and go, wow, okay, yeah, perhaps we need to adopt these energy plans into our general plan. Perhaps this is really important, and perhaps we need to do it now and not wait. So, well, finally, I was going to say, if you have any contacts within the media, if you know anybody, and not just in our county, but outside, please, you know, contact them. We also have an email signup sheet. Go ahead, give us your name, your phone number, your email, we'll put you on an email list, we'll give you information that you can forward to others. And we need to pass the word, and we need to do it at a grassroots level, but it's got to grow way beyond grassroots, because we really, we sort of have a big apple tree that we need to shake right now. So, I thank you all for coming, and that's all I've got to say.
Great. I, I hope we do shake the apple tree. To me, that's participatory democracy in action, and that's what the next few years has got to be about if we're going to keep the ship a-stay afloat. The next section, which will begin with, with Brian, because he has a very specific question following upon Kate, is a fifteen minutes or so, whatever it takes, for the panelists to get some clarification from each other? I think it'll be instructive and interesting. So, Brian, why don't you start off that section?
Yeah, actually, I don't have a question. I just want to reiterate one thing that, and I think this is really the key thing we need to drive home to the supervisors and the planning commissioners, is that we're talking about our, our security in this county, and it's better that we develop our solutions, we as a community, rather than to wait for the state or the federal level to impose their solutions. That's the key thing. I wanted to make sure that we, we really hearken back to every step of the way here. This is about us as a community, building our solutions for the future. We all know climate change is going to impact us. We all know that oil prices are spiraling upwards. What are the solutions we can generate here before they get imposed upon us? So, I just wanted to reiterate what Kate was saying.
Well, now, I'm hoping that, that the rest of the panelists will have some questions for each other.
I have a question for Patrick. He's really not one of us, he's kind of from the county. But I wanted to ask Patrick, I just got back from a, a conference up in Arcata, it's called Planet Green. And they are developing an energy element up there. And an energy element is not required in the general plan. is not required in the general plan. I wrote an energy element for the Mendocino general plan in 1978. Unfortunately, it was not adopted, but some of it was included in the last general plan. In fact, the first policy that was in the land use element under the energy section was to appoint a countywide energy task force to develop an energy element. So it's 26 years later, but our, still, our directive is not to do an energy element. And I wondered what, throughout the state, what precedent there, there is for having energy elements included in the general plan.
As far as I know, there's only two. Again, you mentioned one up in Humboldt County. They have done a fairly in-depth process in terms of energy planning. The, I believe it's the County of San Diego as well, has done a fair amount in terms of energy planning, though some of which, some of which is done, actually been done by the council of governments down there, and not the county per se. Those are the only two that spring to mind. We do have a couple of counties that have energy resources. The things that come to mind would be Kern County and Santa Barbara County, which both have fairly sizable oil deposits. Both have aspects in their general plan that deal with oil production, quite naturally. And from out of state, we've got clear examples up in Oregon that they have energy discussed in their general plans, or their general plan equivalents up there. So it is not by far unanimous. In fact, it's more frequently not discussed than it is discussed.
Also, I've recently read two documents by the California Energy Commission that call for the legislature to direct county governments to include energy elements in their general plan. Are you aware of the, those documents?
We're monitoring, like we monitor all of the other aspects of what the legislature tells county governments or municipal governments to include in their plans. We are aware that they are discussing the energy aspect. As I mentioned earlier, no general plan is required to have any specific element as an element, separate element in their plan. They are required to answer the topics. And so the, if the legislature says you must talk about energy, we talk about energy.
Got to ask everybody to hold for just 15 seconds while we change tapes.
We still use, we still use tapes?
Do we have to hold our breath?
Ron Arndt needs to hold his breath. 10 seconds.
I need to finish the response, by the way.
Absolutely. Okay, take a deep breath. Our tape has been changed. Patrick's going to finish his response.
I was meant, yeah, to continue that thought, we, we do monitor that. There is another aspect that the California Energy Commission, or CEC, has discussed. Again, it's not mandated that county or city jurisdictions do that, but there's an aspect called an energy, energy emergency plan of action. And this is geared not so much in the general plan context, but within the emergency operation functions that all cities and counties do tend to plan about. So we do pay attention to what the state tells us to do. They do have to certify our element. We pay close attention to what the state says on housing. The state, the California Transportation Commission reviews the transportation aspects, so we do pay attention.
Any other questions from, any of you to any of the aspects that were mentioned? I have one right off. I mean, you spoke, Steve, a lot about what individuals can do and a new consciousness for individuals. What can communities do? You mentioned a couple of those things. Do you have anything to elaborate so that we can look at this general plan from the point of view of what communities can do?
There's something called a community choice aggregation that has just been adopted by the City of San Francisco, and it's in the process of being adopted by the City of Chula Vista, and Marin County has adopted it. It's where they aggregate the electric load of the entire area governmental entity. And it's kind of like a municipal utility, but it's much, it's under, it's been a law adopted by the legislature. So it's not as arduous a, a task as creating a municipal utility. It's, it's a fairly direct, straightforward process that any government entity or county can, can adopt, where you aggregate your county load and you develop some kind of a performance standard, a portfolio standard of renewables. In San Francisco, it's a 51% renewable portfolio standard, which means that over some period of time, they're saying by 2015, 51% of their energy will come from renewables, and it will be generated in the area of that community. So on a community basis, say, we could say that by 2020, by, by the end of this plan, we will have 51% of our energy generated within the county. And then we wouldn't be exporting a quarter of a billion dollars every year out of this county to make sure that the Saudis get their oil profits and to make sure that the oil companies are making, what was it, $143 billion in profit last year?
Record.
That was a record, and it'll probably be topped this year, because we are very addicted. So if, all that energy that we can generate in county means we are not paying out of county, generates not only energy in county, it generates jobs in county. So if we can all look at community choice aggregation and start working toward that, then we can be independent and dependent on renewables in the future.
Great. Are there any other questions that you have of each other?
I'll get a question. I'm going to pick on Patrick again.
Get him.
You knew that, Patrick. So I'm wondering exactly, the CEQA issue, how is that being addressed as far as adoption, making sure that the general plan adheres to the CEQA guidelines?
Well, anything that pertains to, any form of legal ramifications obviously gets referred to our county council. And I'm not an attorney, and I'm not at all going to speak to how we legally review that. But conceptually, we do have, the state does put out a, a set of guidelines to, that refers to the aspects that CEQA covers. It changes every year, court decisions and legislative changes does change what CEQA does. It's an evolving standard, basically. And as it changes, we have to change our documents to match it. Typically, that means the documents get more detailed and, instead of less detailed. The thing that's most on our agenda at the moment is, is watching what is happening to the San Bernardino case. I mean, virtually every county that's in the process of preparing a general plan is stopping to take a look at that. We know that our counterparts in Napa have had to stop and look at their general plan process. I worked on a general plan update in Tulare County. I'm pretty sure they're having to reassess their plan as well, in terms of that. So that's the key issue. CEQA does also outline very clearly the different subject matters you have to cover.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question on that. How long has this current update been taking place? And what has the cost been so far?
I don't actually have cost information. I've only been working for the county since July of 2006. That's something that I, I have not been on the process since its beginning. From what I understand, it's been, it was initiated in the late 90s. I know there was a pause in the process while our team was being formed. At the, there was a series of workshops in 2005, which obviously I wasn't part of. And then after that, the, the supervisors authorized the formation of the planning team. We took a year's pause while it got organized, and UVEP took priority, and now we're back to doing it.
UVEP?
Ukiah Valley Area Plan.
So if it has been going on for five to seven years, and AB 32 was just passed last year, doesn't that change the whole process? Because now, all of a sudden, CO2 is classified as a pollutant where it wasn't before.
I wouldn't say it changes everything, because until the plan is passed, nothing is set, is certain. I mean, we don't, we have what is now the, what's the working draft general plan. As you can see, it's rather thin. They actually will have to fill in the, the meat of this document, and this is what the process does. As requirements change, this document changes. As the state says, you have to add this, this, and this, we add this, this, or this. So this is an evolving document. And since at this point, we don't even have a dra, a full, what we consider a draft general plan and draft environmental impact report, the process is still open, open for change.
Is it true that that document contains only policies primarily, and the goals and the, there are the issues and the findings are not included in there?
There are some, there are some findings, and actually, I don't think there are any findings in this particular version of it. There are goals, and those are, is stated in Section 2, which is the planning principles. I mentioned that there were two elements to this. There's an overview chapter that discusses the guiding principles that the general plan will have. It sits as like above the two, but it's not, they're, they're not elements, per se. That, that is in there. We do have some tentative things that will become implementation measures. But as the document itself is written over the next few months, those will get, will be put in as well.
Yeah, my concern is that the first time we made a general plan, when the county got sued because they gave the county general plan to the judge in a shoe, a shoebox, it wasn't accepted. And, and we had to first, as a citizens' group, clarify the issues, the overriding issues. And then we had to find the facts surrounding those issues, which were the findings. And then we proceeded to use those issues and findings to create goals. And then we made policies to try and achieve those goals. And then there was the implementation part of it that followed that. But this time around, it seems like we're using those very same issues and findings from 30 years ago to adopt new policies. So what I'm, what I'm asking is, if the county has done a process which actually looked at things that have happened in the last 30 years that have, may, may have changed the issues in the county?
If you don't have anything specific on that, maybe time to open the questions up to the audience?
I would be amenable to that. I'm, I just.
I don't want to put you on the spot.
Anymore than we already have.
Yeah, no problem. That's, I did choose to come out here. No, I'm just, but speaking from, from the staff's perspective, I mean, this is a process that's been ongoing, and the document is evolving. And we do have various aspects that meet, which are state mandated, and as well as directed to us by our Board of Supervisors, guidance given to us from our planning commission. And those two reflect what, generally, what the county populace through their elect, through the electoral process has designated for us to follow. And so as times change, our documents do change.
Can I ask one more question, just to, just to leave it as a lingering? Two years ago, the county had a series of town meetings in which the planning department and the consultant, the one who's doing the rewrite, or running the rewrite, went around and asked for input from the individuals in the county. Where does that show up in the document? How were those considered? Were any of those incorporated into the current framework or general plan draft?
The original version, this, the one I showed you, is based on the original version that was circulating, I believe it would have been in 2005. I do have on my desk the actual transcripts and comments that were submitted during the 2005 process, plus the stuff that has drifted in over the past few years. I know that this document, based on that, based on those things, and then we have had a series of meetings this year, where we had one, several of them in Ukiah, one in Anderson Valley, and one on the coast, tried to engage the community as well and get an update. This, I can tell you, is not the last word. Based on what we've heard this year, new state guidelines, the fact that we have a full-time staff now dedicated to doing long-range planning, and the fact that the supervisors and planning commission are actively providing input at the moment, this document will change to meet those. So, and that, yes, that does include the community meetings of 2005, as well as stuff that comes up in 2007. And at the next two, which I must add, we have two meetings coming up, one this Thursday, and then on the 19th of July.
Is the meeting this Thursday, Patrick? Does it have a, is it a public meeting? And is it, is there a particular theme for it?
They're all public meetings, and this one is some of the remaining issues that had not been addressed, or the commissioners felt there was additional work that needed to be done on, not including energy.
Great. Now's the time for all of you to show us how you've been paying attention, what you care about, errors, omissions, and so on. I would ask that you speak at the podium so that the people at home who will see this on DVD or over the broadcast can see you and hear you well. That microphone is live. Brian, you're first? Great.
Good evening. Firstly, I want to really thank all of you for doing this important work. And it seems to me that a lot of what this document is about and the work that's been done sits very squarely in the movement across this part of the country towards economically localized communities. And I'm sure all of us are aware that there are many of our communities in our county that have been pursuing this very noble and very urgent cause. So my question is this. What do we see, or maybe anyone in the, on the panel here, or possibly anybody in the audience, what do we see as the major obstacles to adopting these wise choices in order to be more self-reliant and more secure in the future?
Well, that's a great question. Who would like to go for that first? Major obstacles?
I think that the, the most major obstacle is simply the political process. I, I don't want to say the Board of Supervisors. I think that it is a huge process. The general plan, as Patrick said, it's been in the works for a very long time. Okay? And there is in here 12 pages of energy policy to be potentially added in, integrated into the general plan. And so I think that the political process itself is our major, major obstacle.
Thank you.
I'd like to add to that, that we, when we were working on this, we were supposed to be a six-month group. And when we developed the inventory, it really didn't get paid any attention. Some of the recommendations were put on the website. Attention wasn't really paid for it. We had some input from the Board of Commissioners. When Patrick gave a very eloquent presentation on beef oil, for example.
Play Commissions.
Play Commissions. And basically, we shut down a third of the way through, and said, well, that's fine, but what can we do about this, and so forth. And he gave another one on agricultural, agricultural policies that would support small, small local farms, as well as intentional farming communities. And that likewise was shut down to an extent. Patrick has been a voice from the planning department's side. He hasn't been a, one of the rebellious ones in the city group itself. He's the professional that we, we go to and try to put these things through. So we kind of got the impression that we really needed to take this out, articulate it, inform the report that we gave, our recommendations and engage the community. Because we didn't think that we could get the attention we Because we didn't think that, um, we could get the attention we needed beyond that. So we're looking to you, as a community, to say, "Are these rational policies for this county? Are these rational suggestions? Should we make them? Please go talk to your planning commissioners and your supervisors and urge them to do this." This is our personality as a county. This is our independence, our security in the future. So, if these things appeal to you, take them, and please talk to your supervisor and your planning commissioner.
I want to just add that at the county level, the buck stops with the board of supervisors. It takes three votes, and I hope you all encourage, and, uh, your supervisor to vote, um, for your interest and the interest of future generations. And, uh, let, let, uh, your supervisor know how you feel.
Sign the petition. Sign the petition. I'm going to keep saying it.
Great. Madge?
Better put a pen out there. Um, yes, hi, I'm Madge Strong. And, um, wanted to commend the, uh, Energy Task Force to not only doing the research to, you know, put the foundation for why this is important, which I certainly, uh, very, very strongly agree that this is not only the future, it's on us now. Uh, and the energy costs are going up dramatically and all of that. But not only doing the research, but then turning it into very specific, um, recommendations that can be integrated right into the general plan. And that is, I think, you know, makes it politically much more, uh, clear how to go. Uh, so I think that, that's an excellent approach. And then I wanted to, uh, ask you, Brian, especially to clarify a little bit. I think a very important point that you touched on was that you're not mandating lifestyle changes, but you are offering options and, um, ways that, that can be available for those who wish to become more energy efficient or conserve, or, you know, to have these options available within the county, such as transportation. And just that, that point of not, uh, we're, we're not trying to impose something on everybody. We're trying to offer ways that we can go ahead in the future and, and have.
What is your question, Madge?
Well, I, I think Brian just touched on this.
Okay.
And I think that's really important. Talk like him.
The, uh, well, it really starts with who pays for the county services. We all do. And sometimes that is a disconnect. And we need to start from the point that county sets an example. This building here, when was the last time an energy audit was done in it and how frequently? Because energy conservation methods change yearly. There's new developments and so forth. We should require the county set a precedent by having every five years an energy audit. And they're generally little or no cost to make sure that the energy they use is not continuing to escalate and come out of our pocket. When we talk about, um, the aspects of food production, local food production, agriculture in this county is aimed at large-scale farms, uh, in, in, across the nation, I should say that. It's, it's aimed at large-scale farms, mechanized farms that are pesticide, fertilizer, energy-intensive issues. We don't have large-scale landman, uh, arable farmland here in this county that can be farmed on that level, nor do I think we want to. It's, a lot of it's been built into. What we want to do, county, what the county can do is actually address the aspects of encouraging land use, such that small-scale farming can come back, can be viable here, can provide us local food. Now, the other aspect of this is we can't impose upon you guys and say, "Hey, you gotta make lifestyle changes." Economically, that's going to be the deciding factor for each of us, how we change our lifestyle. As the price of petroleum goes up, as these laws come down and say, "We can't do certain things. We can't drive this kind of vehicle, or we can't do this kind of activity." That's going to change what we do. But the county can start by setting precedent through policies that also guarantee the security and the independence of us. So we're not trying to impose a lifestyle change. What we're trying to do is say to the county, first off, it's our money, taxpayers' money. We need to look at energy issues. We need to look at things that can be done inexpensively or as simply as policy suggestions, that will start the ball rolling, that will start finding solutions here in the county for what is a real problem. We, on the other hand, are going to have to make our own decisions, our own changes, based on the economics that come down. That, I think, is the difference.
Great. Steve, then Patrick.
Um, I came up here in the seventies in the back to the land, actually, late sixties, in the back to the land movement, thinking that I was going to go back to the land and everything was going to be rosy. Well, let me tell you, it's a lot of work. Um, and you can go through a lot of wives. I milked a cow for eight years. Um, and at one point, I, I realized that, uh, you know, solar energy, there's a lot of that stuff. And if we just learned how to use it more directly, we could have everything we wanted, and we wouldn't have to breathe foul air either. You know, I, I figured out the other day that if I put in a one-kilowatt photovoltaic array, I can drive an electric car twenty-five miles a day for twenty-five years. And that's my only fuel cost. Now, if you do the same thing with fuel at three fifty a gallon, that'll cost you forty thousand dollars. Now, over the next twenty years, I guarantee you gasoline is going to be probably an average of ten dollars a gallon. If it's an average of ten dollars a gallon, that's a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in fuel that that same five-thousand-dollar photovoltaic array at current price will cost you to fuel an electric vehicle. So, we can have our cake and eat it too. All we have to do is use direct solar energy instead of the ancient solar energy that's fossil fuel.
Patrick? I'd like to clarify and then provide a little extra information. Uh, the issue, it comes down to the term "social engineering", and I'm just going to clarify what a plan can and can do, uh, or say, or can't say. Um, you can't make a policy that says you have to drive your kid, or you, you're not allowed to drive your kids to school. However, that can be reflected as you wanted to have a community where you can, your house is close and within walkable distance to a school. That can be made a policy. You can't say you have to drive an electric car, or you can't drive. Um, what you can say, what you can do is make a policy to make the infrastructure improvements, such as providing electrical charging stations. That's what a plan can and can't do. And then, uh, we talked briefly, there was a question that was brief, briefly brought up the issue about county purchases. These are not insignificant. I have some stats here. In two thousand and five, the county purchased two-point-four-million kilowatt-hours of electricity. The electrical bill for the county was five, five-hundred thousand bucks for that year. In two thousand and five, we purchased eight, eighty-eight thousand therms of natural gas. I don't have the bill on that one. We also purchased, uh, in two thousand and five, one-hundred-ten-thousand gallons of gasoline. I don't have the diesel purchases, which are actually higher because that is what, the principal fuel our road crew uses. Um, so that kind of gives you an example. We are one of the largest consumers of energy, uh, and direct consumers of energy in this county to carry out the, um, the, uh, mission that the county provides, the social services, the building services, uh, and all of that. And so, that's where the, the issue of, as a county, we do expend significant taxpayer dollars to purchase these resources. And so, to make it a policy that the county itself makes wiser investment choices, particularly when it comes to the time when you build new buildings or renovate, to purchase the most efficiently operating systems out there.
Great. Thank you very much. Jed, next question.
Thank you. Uh, my name's Jed Diamond. I'm a resident of Willets for the last fifteen years. Plan to be here the rest of my life, along with my wife, Carlin. I had read the, the document that you're, you're speaking about earlier, and I just want to thank you for really clarifying in more depth what it says and the importance of it. And it seems clear to me that, that this document, and hopefully its incorporation by the board of supervisors, is one of the most vital things that could happen in our area over the next twenty years. My particular area of, uh, interest and passion and expertise is, is a healthcare provider, which I've been doing for the last forty-two years. And what I know, uh, as a specialist in community mental health is that, uh, the stress level is going up all over, uh, the depression levels are going up all over uh, as these factors impact people and affect our, our lives. And I think the, the, the resource that, to me, is, is most vital in my life, and I think in the life of many of us, is our health. And when I look at, uh, what this kind of plan could offer us in terms of enhanced both physical and mental health, it seems to me that, I, I can't imagine anything that would be more enhancing to our health than the kind of policies that you're recommending in terms of local, uh, involvement in our own future, uh, being able to have control of our own lives, uh, being able to connect and support, uh, our local neighbors and our local economy. So, as a healthcare provider, uh, I, I think this is the kind of thing that those of us that are concerned about health, involved with health, uh, really need to support. So I hope all of you who, who feel that way, who have your own passions about why these kinds of things should, uh, be incorporated, will obviously use our influence to, uh, take this unique opportunity, which, you know, isn't going to happen again for twenty years. And by then, I think, uh, we're going to, as you pointed out, have a lot more difficult time making change. So, thank you, and I hope we, uh, all use our energies to make this happen.
Good comment. Tony Orth?
Hi, I'm Tony Orth, and, uh, I'm from Brook Trails. I built a passive solar home. Uh, when I moved here in the early eighties, that was going to be what I did. Passive solar homes, leading to active solar homes. Um, I have reviewed this, and, uh, being in government, uh, I can say that the planner will tell you a lot of the language is unsupportable because it, it does socially engineer. Uh, it tells farmers how to farm. It, it tells us that we need landfills within the county. We got rid of our landfills. We transferred it out because we're what's called a wet county. Um, that means that the pollutants stay here and flow into our watersheds. Um, so methane gas capture can still be done on the waste stream. There's a lot of specifics in this document that don't make common sense, but, uh, tell a home builder they have to provide for solar aspecting. I can tell you, a lot of people move into the redwoods. That would be, I've seen some three-acre clear cuts to provide solar access, and they're sliding down the hill right now. When you put in the kind of language that dictates, you're failing as a planning tool. Now, the county has been working, and I saw the planning team, on some directions that are general in nature, that would completely adopt the kind of movement that's worldwide. When you say early that you want to do everything within Mendocino County, using Mendocino experts, you're giving up on the rest of the world. All that expertise, as far as I'm concerned, win. You're not looking for the tools that are out there, available even through the general plan processes that's ongoing. These are some documents handed out to the county at their last, um, meeting. Marin Countywide Plan Update, two town, two thousand and one, interim guiding principles. Guiding principles. What we need to talk to the county about is those guiding principles that then come out to the policies that flow, both because of legislation that's occurred just in the last few months, will be ongoing. Uh, the Brook Trails area has a specific plan that is updated every five years. Anything significant that has occurred within that five-year period can be updated in that process. These documents are telling the county what they need to do is general guiding principles of sustainable practices that we all support, leading to area-specific plans where the communities, Booneville, Covelo, Brook Trails, and Willets, come up with their own ways of applying those principles. Uh, Laytonville and Johnny's District, right now, these same group of people are guiding the public how to design their sidewalks and redesign their street, uh, going through their town. And that is a, almost a community congress approach, where you're actually working with the community members right there, hands-on, what, what's going to go on? That's what specific plans are. So, what this group needs to understand is that there's a lot of change coming. And your fear of this twenty-year in stone, that's why you can't do specific in stone policies. You have to, uh, come up with a guiding principles, and those guiding principles have to change, yes, absolutely. And they're on, they're, they're, those suggestions are out there. Uh, they've been given to the planning, by this planning team, to the supervisors. What we need to do now is really get to knowledgeable about those principles that are, we need to support as a public, and get the supervisors to adopt them as the guiding principles that then lead to specific plans in each community.
Thank you. Uh, Brian has a response. Steve?
Oh, and one other comment. There's no inventory of renewable energy production in Mendocino County in this document, what we're producing today. And we're the solar capital of the world.
Okay.
And I found that to be a big lack.
Brian, Steve, and the.
Your, your last question, or your last comment, um, most of the solar in this county, for the most part, right now, up to the last couple of years, has been off-grid, making it very difficult to assess. We did a, basically, a poll amongst solar providers in the county to try to determine approximately how much it was by their number of installations. We decided not to include that within the inventory because it was somewhat nebulous as far as the actual figures. We looked at an average. It is in the raw data that's published and went to the board of supervisors. Secondly, the policy recommendations were made in a way that we are not planners. We did not understand or attempt to understand the specific language that they use. We wanted to put it into language as we discussed it. They.
Thirty seconds.
Last point I'd like to make. One of the members of the EWG that helped generate the policy was your wife.
None of her language is in the document, is it?
Steve?
Yeah, I, uh, as I said, uh, in my question to Patrick earlier, we would have been very happy to work with, um, issues that would develop guidelines. But we were trying to work within the framework of the document that we had in front of us, which only included policies. And I, I agree, that is, is doing a big disservice to operate with policies first, rather than looking at overall issues and then developing the findings that support those issues. And those should be leading to guidelines and goals, and then the policies should come. But we were faced with dealing with policies, and that's why we were, that was all we could do, basically.
Sixty seconds, Patrick?
I'd like to quickly add two things here. The, first of all, it must be important to stress that plans are not set in stone. Um, we don't do a twenty-year plan with the intention of keeping it stale for twenty years. These things, even our, even our current general plan, which was updated in two thousand, or, uh, created in the late seventies, early eighties, has been, has been modified throughout the years. Our housing element has a five-year requirement. Um, the ideal process is you plan for twenty, reassess at ten. That's the ideal process. And to be honest with you, plans do get amended. This is not going to be a sto, a document that we carve out in stone. And then I need to talk briefly about the process from which the suggestions, policies made in here, wind up in here. There is a process, uh, involved in that. The staff, what the staff is going to do is look at the things that are in here and try and come up with what is applicable within a general plan, what is, uh, what is applicable in other county functions. Um, some of the recommendations in here don't deal with the general plan, but do deal with other county functions. We need to get them in the right place. And then the other thing is, we need to correspond with how it, in order to make an internally consistent document, we have to make sure that the proposals here line up with the other aspects of our general plan. So, i- in essence, this is, there is a process to get what has been brought to our attention by the Energy Working Group into a set of recommendations that the staff will present to the planning commission, and ultimately, the board of supervisors. So, that, that's just important to outline that process.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Manny?
Yes.
Actually, if I could address this as well.
Sixty seconds.
You got it. So, um, first of all, I just want to say, I don't think this is a document born out of fear. I think it's a document born out of practicality. And as it's already been said by all of my. And as it's already been said by all of my associates up here, this is really a guideline. We didn't expect this to be taken as it is and put into policy. But one of the reasons that I think we've made it public is it's not just a guideline for our Board of Supervisors, it's also a guideline for each individual city. So, things that are not adopted into the general plan, each individual city has the ability to take this and say, hey, these are some good ideas, and they can adopt them on a local level. And I think that's really important to note.
And I'd like to say, guideline for discussion.
Yes, definitely.
Because that's really the bottom line here, is really just to get communications going as far as, is this applicable or not?
Tony, if you wanted to say anything else, just after Ellen. Liam, go ahead.
I left on a negative note.
That's okay. Just, well, hold on a second. After Ellen.
Thank you for putting together this report, and thank you, Johnny, for coming tonight. I appreciate your attendance. I believe that every supervisor except you received a direct phone call inviting you to be here, and you're the only one that showed up. Thank you. The one question that I have is kind of a sour note. I read through the last general plan that the city of Willets developed, and compared it to what has happened over the, over the period that that plan was in effect, and I saw very little resemblance between the two. In what fashion does the general plan actually affect what happens? Is it more than just an exercise in thinking? Does it actually place parameters on the policies that occur afterwards?
Well, I guess that's addressed for me.
As best you can.
Yeah.
John can always step up into the line if he wishes to speak.
The, the general plan does shape a variety of topics, the county does do. Any project that does come in does get scrutiny to how the general plan discusses it, but as the word "general" is, it's not specific in some issues. That's why we have also zoning code, building code, and other aspects of what the government does provide in terms of, just basically, what are the functions of the government. So the general plan does shape directly what ends up happening on the ground, but it also shapes indirectly through our building code and other laws that we do pass, or the supervisors pass, and that the county administrative staff carries out. It does shape that. And so, and times do change, and some of the, some of the goals espoused in general plans don't have a financial or other incentive, or just basically are, the market, the goals go one direction, the market goes the other direction, and sometimes what was intended to happen doesn't happen because things change, either because it's market, or because the state or other agencies change, the ground rules on us after the plan was adopted. That's the general answer to the general plan. But there are multiple documents that counties produce that guide development and other aspects, and the general plan is just one of them.
Thank you.
Top-level one.
Thank you. Next question?
My name's Ellen Drell, and thank you for doing all this work. It's been a long process, I know. I came in a little late, so I may have missed this explanation at the beginning, but how are you presenting this to the public? Is this a draft document, and are you seeking public comment? And to what extent are you planning to alter it before you ask people to ask the county to adopt it as is? Or how are you asking the public to use this document?
I'm going to take the first step with this. The intention here was, we were brought together as a working group of people who were involved in the energy field to advise on energy-specific policies, but as we started talking to people within the community, we saw that there were many interests within each community. And we felt that as we transitioned from this document, which is the formal report that the supervisors, to the outreach document to try to engage the communities, what our intention was is to try to get each community to take ownership, to look at their own needs, their own concerns, and to encourage them to approach the Board of Supervisors and Planning Department and so forth, in their language, their concerns, their personality. So that's why when Kate talked about outreach and getting other communities involved, what we're trying to do is encourage each community to take ownership of the issues, to bring forth those things that are dear to their community, and so forth. We're not trying to get any, we're not trying to get the whole county to say, we want this exactly as it is, because these were created somewhat in a vacuum, if you will. They were created through a series of meetings over a period, a long period of time, looking at one specific issue, not a specific community.
Thank you. Could I ask you against the wall to please stand so that the camera has a good view?
Looking here under land use and agricultural lands, something caught my eye that I'm real concerned about, and, and that has, that happens to be the recommendation, that minimum agricultural parcel size be reduced to five acres. It's now, the existing general plan has minimum agricultural zone size 40 acres, which has been very beneficial for this county. I mean, if we had had a five-acre minimum parcel size, we would have seen the subdivision into ranchettes of Little Lake Valley and other places long before. And there's absolutely nothing in anybody's, in any jurisdiction's legislative body of law that prevents anybody from, from doing agriculture or farming on, except for having chickens in town, I guess, or roosters in town. I mean, you can, you can do agriculture on a quarter of an acre, an acre, 10 acres, five acres, two acres, and I think the fact that our general plan has a 40-acre parcel minimum has saved us from the kind of ranchette development that has happened all over the state. And to see that kind of a recommendation in this document makes me very nervous. I mean, there are other recommendations in here that I think are fine, but this is one that stands out as something that is, would, would really be detrimental to all kinds of resources in the, so I want to say that, but, and I, the reason I asked the first question is because I don't know if, Brian, what you're saying is we should engage in the process of the ad hoc committee in order to change this, or should we go back to our own committees and come up with our own recommendations to the county? And I might just remind people that in the seventies, when this, when our county general plan was updated, it was a wonderful process. Each community had a committee that worked with representatives from the county planning department for months, and each community came up with exactly what you're talking about, and a lot of that got incorporated into our general plan, which is why our existing general plan actually has some excellent language in it, and it, and it stands to this day. The water element is, is very good, and some of the zoning elements, zoning recommendations are very good. The problem is, it's not been implemented, much of it. So, anyway, that, that's, you know, a two, two-part question. I'm very concerned and want to alert people to this recommendation to reducing ag minimums to five acres, and the second part of the question is, how do we as the public, how do you want us to engage in this process? And I know you said, go out and sort of create your own thing. I'm not sure, I mean, that's probably the best thing to do, but in order to do that, the county planning department and the Board of Supervisors basically has to step back and allow the time for that process to take place, because when they first started this general, this most recent general plan update, the county planning department specifically said, we don't want to do that again, it's too much trouble, we don't want to deal with the public, we're just going to hire consultants, and they're going to go have a couple of meetings with the public here and there, so they can check off their list. We met with the public, yes, yes, on those three dates. So, it really wasn't a process for getting public input.
Okay, thank you very much. Just in the interest of time, getting, moving on into the evening, keep your questions and your comments brief. Same goes up here. And Steve had a response, and then you had a response. Keep it brief, please.
The first thing was, this is a draft, it says so right on the title page. On the agricultural element, from my perspective, that was done to protect smaller parcels, parcels of agriculture from being converted, not so much to reduce the parcel size, but there is a lot of small-scale agriculture going on that I think should be preserved in this county. And if we don't have a policy that protects five-acre parcels as agricultural land, if they are agricultural land, if they're being used for agricultural land, protects that from conversion to anything else, because food is the highest and best use, growing food is the highest and best use, I think, of land.
That's not what it says.
Yeah, well, that, that was, that would be my intent with that kind of a policy. And, you know, this, this, that document represents more than 200 hours of volunteer time, so if there is any, any faults that you find in it, you have to kind of consider that we are volunteers up here, and there may be something that's amiss. But, you're right, the old process was much better. I was on the CAC for three years back in the late seventies, early eighties. It was a wonderful process. I wish we could have had that process again, but we were denied that, and that's why we volunteered our time to try and get some citizen input into this plan.
Thank you. Tony?
Well, the devil's, the devil's in the details. But there are solutions in the earlier energy crisis. California did adopt a law that allows communities to develop CEAs.
Tony, can you talk into the microphone?
Community energy authorities. That's like the MCAG of energy. It would include the county, the cities, special districts, any player within energy at all, conservation programs, right now being used by the city of San Francisco for their conservation programs. But, it will allow you to tie in, get the city of Ukiah, that's already a municipal utility, they can buy and sell green power now. My 3KW on my roof, I want to sell to a CEA of Mendocino County in three years, when I'm out of my contract with PG&E for my excess power. I want to sell it here to my neighbors. A CEA authority is everything you've been talking about, it's the JPA, it's right there, ready to go. No one's adopted it, no one's made it happen. We can do it, and we can lead the way.
Thank you.
It's one of the, the recommendations here, and there's a whole appendix on that topic.
On the CEA?
Yes. I'd like to address--
Very, very brief.
Ellen Drell, very quickly. We had discussed with CSAs through this county, several other small-scale and large-scale farms, in trying to come up with agricultural policy. The agricultural policy is still under development. What you see in there was really just the concept, we're still trying to figure out how, from the planning department's side, how something like that could be done, because right now, we actually have a multitude of one-acre agricultural ranchettes.
They're grandfathered in.
Exactly, and it's a real serious issue, because it's an agricultural designation, but nobody's growing food on there.
You can't make somebody grow food.
Right.
Okay, next question.
Thank you very much to all of you for the time that you've put into this process. I really appreciate it, and I'm very proud to be part of this community that's moving forward in a really important direction right now.
Thank you.
And I would like to reiterate a point that Jed Diamond made about how this can positively impact our health, and I see especially some of the recommendations in transportation, positively influencing the health with respect to respiratory diseases because of improved air quality, with respect to the obesity and the diabetes epidemics that we're facing by encouraging public transportation and facilitating bike riding and walking. I presently am not allowed to let my child ride his bike to school at the middle school this coming year because it's too unsafe. And we need to implement policies with whatever way we can to enable them to ride their bikes and walk to school. Thank you.
Thank you. Introduce yourself, please.
Yes, my name is David Drell. I want to come, I would like to commend this group for doing what, what you've done. I've, I've done a lot of this work in my life here in Mendocino County, and I know what it involves, and I know the kind of dedication that you all have, have brought to this process. Like Ellen, I was part of the CAC process back in the eighties, and I think it was a tragic mistake that the county supervisors basically abandoned the political, involving the public in this issue that really will, is to provide a plan for what Mendocino County looks like in the future. And they did it because they didn't believe that the participation of the public, it was too messy a process. You know, imagine, in a, in a country that, where we think we have a democratic ideal, and our elected officials thought that the participation of the public directly in their lives was too messy and too inconvenient, and so they went with this, with this consultant-led process. I think it's a, I think it's a dead-on-arrival process. We will never get from the consultants, to the planning commission, to the supervisors, we will never get a process that's any good, and it will never reflect the individual community interests and the, and the kind of community and forward-looking ideas and policies that you're looking at. It's too cumbersome, the supervisors are overwhelmed, they aren't, they have too many things on their plate, and quite frankly, a number of them don't even have a clue as to these ideas at this point. I think, okay, so I, but you guys have steeped yourself in this, and for us to now go to the SOBs, or go to the Planning Commission on our own and make this case, I think it's not useful. I, I think it would be politically more useful for us to come to you and, and refine this document so that, and then provide the political pressure on our elected officials and on the planning commissioners to make this happen. And I think we should also provide political pressure to our supervisors to abandon this, this worthless consultant-led general plan. We should return to the CAC process so that our local communities can produce the kind of local area plans that allowed our previous general plan to reflect the, the character and nature and the interest of our local communities.
Thank you. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Mariah Geladen, and I made a huge effort to come here because I think what you've done is great, and I wanted to congratulate you on it. I also wanted to ask a question about the elephant in the room. You talked earlier about the limits of the political process on your efforts, and I wanted to ask you about the corporate limitations to your effort. I'm thinking of Monsanto's exercise of free speech on measure H, and, again, so great that that didn't succeed, but what are the corporate rights you have to deal with here in Mendocino County, the rights to make a profit at whatever cost? Who is it? Walmart? Are there any logging corporations alive that can throw you a loop? What does PG&E think about your efforts?
I've already, I've already talked about the oil company's $143 billion profit, and, you know, we're really to blame for that, because we're still driving these, these vehicles that are over 100-year-old technology that are 15% efficient. We haven't, how many of you have seen Who Killed the Electric Car? I recommend, highly recommend that everybody see that, because that explains what was taken away from us. We were actually set back 20 years in the transition away from corporate control that the oil companies have over us through our addiction to oil and our vehicles. We were taken back 20 years from where we could be now. The EV1 was developed in 1989, and it was the best car ever built in Detroit. It only used 150 watt-hours per mile. A gas car uses 10 to 100 times that.
Well, regarding the corporations and, you know, what are, what is their influence on us? Obviously, it's pretty strong. We look at Ukiah, and we look at the fact that we don't have certain local stores, we don't have a little toy store, a little pet food store, they used to all be there, but now we've got Walmart. So, as Steve said, we've brought this on ourselves. So if really we want to address-- So if really we want to address, you know, the corporate white elephant, as you called it, it means shop locally. It means quit, quit going to Walmart. Okay, yeah, you're going to pay a little bit extra, you know, but you need to shop locally. You need to think about that. We've got here in Willets, we've got all these lovely locally-owned gas stations, and then Safeway put a gas station in. I won't go to it. I refuse. Yes, I pay a little bit extra, but, you know, I'm not going to support the big corporations because this is about localization. This is about supporting our small businesses. And so it's a matter of putting our dollars where our mouth is.
Great. Before we go to Ron Ornstein, I want to say something about the corporations, our concern about the corporations. Last year, Humboldt County passed Measure T, which limits what corporations can do in their counties. I'm not exactly sure yet what the parameters of Measure T are, but there is a group that is going to be meeting in the first week of July to discuss a similar measure for Mendocino County. If you're interested in that, see me afterwards and I'll get you on the committee. Also, I have to say that on July 16th, Mariah Galarden will be back and it will be a well-sponsored evening honoring her and her work where she will share with us two videos that she has edited into a little more concision, but on the subject of energy. So if any of you recognize her voice, as I, as I think you probably do, she's responsible for TUC Radio, which is syndicated across the United States, but specially highlighted here in Mendocino. Ron Ornstein.
Yeah, hi. I'm Ron Ornstein, former Willetts City Council member and recovering energy denier. About a year and a half ago, we formed an Energy Ad-Hoc Committee to explore the possibility of installing solar panels here in Willets. And Brian was probably the one person who taught me more about the subject and, and got me to understand that it is a workable thing. This is a good document. I like this. I just had, unfortunately, I just got it a little while ago, so I just had a chance to read the executive summary. But what I saw was a lot of the things that we talked about in our ad hoc committee and what we're talking about in the, the continuing Energy Ad-Hoc Committee under Greg Conne. We're taking it, continuing the step. There's a lot of stuff that needs to be done. And, and as you, as been mentioned before, this is a working document. It needs to be tweaked, but I think there's some good ideas. About a year and a half ago, when we decided to take some of our, our own destiny in our own hands, the idea was that we can't wait for the feds or the state to come to help us, to give us any kind of relief. We have to do it ourselves. And I'm very proud to be part of this community where this is what we do. And I think this document is, is the first start to it. Brian Weller raised the first question tonight. How do you make this thing happen? You know, what's, what's the major impediment? And what I found is that, as a council member, a lot of the major impediment is inertia. Even though you want to be progressive, you want to move forward, there's, there's forces that are around you that prevent you from taking some of these, you know, these big steps. What you have to do is to find a way to show that it makes sense, not just environmentally, but also economically and financially. And I think that's what makes it easier for the policymakers to get behind these things. So I, you, Steve, you mentioned a whole lot of these, those elements in that, but I think that's what needs to be emphasized. But thanks a lot for this.
Thank you very much.
My name is Rachel Oliveri and this is a question and a suggestion, I think. I think most of us understand how vulnerable we are to having our food imported. I think fewer of us consider how much water is represented in that importation of food. My question surrounds, if we are to be successful at developing small local farms, how can we assure that the water needed to produce that food will be available considering the competing aspects of growth and development?
Thank you. Steve?
In this state, we, about 12% of our electricity is used to pump water. And the main reason for that is that we have had a lot of growth in areas that have a lot less water than we do. And a lot of our water is going south. And if we were able to try and contain our agriculture and our water within our county or within our communities, we would use a lot less energy pumping water around. It's just amazing. I mean, 12% of the entire state's electricity going to pump water is just an astounding figure. So I think just, just shorter distances from your water, that's one of the main things I worry about, actually, is, is how we are going to get our water when we are, when we don't have access to cheap fossil fuels anymore. So finding sources of water that you can use as gravity feed systems is going to be critical to all agricultural land. And we have a tremendously rich resource in this county. We can build ponds, we can do things to, to satisfy all, we have enough rainfall to satisfy all our, our water needs.
I'd like to add to that, and also I didn't realize, you're the water person who's written some very good articles, some very adept ones. I think this is one of the issues that the state is now suing people, or suing counties over, is the way that land use, planning issues are coming out. They're encouraging. Reading through the CEC document, for example, it's a, it's a retail development-driven policy across the state and across the nation. It is not dictated by local resources. And local resources is a kind of policy-driven approach we need to get back to. What are our resources here? And I have heard a couple of the supervisors bring this up. What do we have for water resources in that particular area? Can we afford to develop that? And that's the kind of thinking we need to get back to. And that is the kind of thing, I think, that Ellen Drell was bringing up, is the community needs to be engaged in the process of the general plan. The community knows, because we live here, what our resources are and can we support that kind of development? Do we need that kind of development and so forth? And that is why, one of the things we look at here is, we were brought together by the county to advise them on general policy for energy. But we realize that there are specific concerns in every community in this county. And what we thought would probably be the best approach was getting this out and getting people talking about it and letting that come back from that community's personality, that community's needs. And so I hope I didn't beat around the bush, but I think it's, it comes back to what the state is suing over now, and which is underlying land use policy and what we can do as a county to retain our concern over the general plan.
Good. Thank you. Ted, do you have a brief one?
Yeah, very briefly. The, just like the issue of energy, water is very, very important and it is pretty much on the forefront of our staff's perspective in terms of what we need to make sure it gets in our general plan. It is the sole function of the water agency to make those kind of, make those kind of plans. And both the issue of water supply and the issue of water quality, which is equally important, need to be addressed in the general plan. And go further than that, it gets incorporated in all of our plans, on down from the general plan to our specific area plans. It comes up extensively in the Ukiah Valley area plan as well.
Great. Kate, just a brief one for Steve.
Very briefly. I just wanted to address your issue regarding small-scale farming because my family has a small family farm, a small couple of acres, 40 fruit trees. It's pretty extensive. In fact, it's, you need tomatoes, cucumbers. Please stop by my office. But the fact is, is we're not pumping water from anywhere, okay? We've got a pond, it doesn't affect, it's not attached to a stream, it's not attached to a spring. It all is rain, rain-fed and we're supplying all of our own water. And for a lot of small-scale agricultural, that's a complete possibility, so.
My name is Steve Scomanini and I'm perhaps the outsider here from down Ukiah way. But speaking of the UVAP, minute ago, I'd like to make a few comments and perhaps connect a few dots and speak of what, to me, is another elephant in the, in the living room here. And it goes back to one of the comments, I think, you said on the end about this being the most important process and such. I'd like to very politely disagree with that and take the conversation back to the UVAP. There are things happening in this county which aren't being addressed or no mention, very little mention of it here, which will influence these energy issues that you're talking about and that are involved with the UVAP process. And there are properties being considered by the UVAP process to be given away from something productive in industry, for example, or for agricultural production, to housing or regional retail, which will effectively make it easier for people outside the county to buy property up here so they can commute down to Sonoma County for their jobs and compete with you for the local energy to fill up their tanks to do so. And it's happening in the UVAP process, the next step of which is tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM. And I'm not, you know, that's not being talked about. So I'm not sure what to say and what, what point to draw from this, except to say, gee, you know, I'm south by 20 miles and I'm worried about different things than what you're worried about up here and you're having this meeting. Who's the person on your crew who's paying attention to what's going on in the UVAP? And who's linking what you're talking about and you experts and know this, this product so well, this document so well, to the UVAP process? Because rubber's hitting the road there. And the next step, like I said, is tomorrow morning. Some of the, some of the, one more step toward letting go of these kind of properties for outside interests and financial interests outside of our county, let alone corporate interests outside of the state, is tomorrow morning.
Very good. Sounds like Ukiah needs a town hall meeting.
Well, thank you. And, and let me add, and if, and if some of those changes happen, one of the things you get up here, at the top of your watershed, is a permanent cement asphalt plant. Great. Got lots of room for it at the Masonite site. Nobody seems to be pushing to put it there, except for me.
All right, let's see what we got. Thanks, Steve.
There are several members that are within the Energy Working Group. One of them is an attorney who's actually working in the localization efforts down there as well and is very concerned about this, very active in the UVAP. We're concerned about this as well. Fortunately, our, our prescription or whatever our directive is handed to us by how we were created by the Board of Supervisors, is to deal specifically with energy issues. Personally, I feel that you don't remove an industrial zoning into residential zoning. You cannot do that because you'll never get that back. You can't afford to lose it. We've been paving over and building residential communities, forgetting about industrial and the business areas that create the jobs, that keep our kids here and provide our long-term employment. I agree with you 100%. But what I'd like to say is that our, again, reiterate, our focus, by decree from the Board of Supervisors, was energy issues. That this goes back to what I said a minute ago, is that we understand that every community has specific issues that aren't just specific to energy, but the water, all the other issues, the zoning. This is something I believe Ellen spoke to as far as how the last general plan was done, that communities need to get involved, need to bring forward their concerns, their personalities, their issues and make them known. The way this general plan was moving did not appear to be giving us that possibility. We did an informal poll, we talked to people who had been at the, the input meetings two years back. We didn't see those things showing up in this general plan at all that concerned us. We need to get back to the point where we have greater involvement in the community. Yourself would be a great leader to bring, to talk to the UVAP people, to come forward and bring your concerns. We're just trying to focus on the energy issue because that's what the Board of Supervisors granted our domain to be.
And speaking, thank you. Speaking of the Board of Supervisors, John, you're next. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, John Pinches. There's a whole lot of thoughts come by this evening. I find myself once again here, going to stand up here and agreeing with David and Ellen Drell. They brought up, they each bring up separate, but really pertinent points to this. First of all, a little, just a history of the, the general plan. The general plan was mandated by state law to, to cover a general plan by 1980. Okay. They had the general plan with the CAC all over the county and it was, as David stated, it was pretty effective. And I think we come up with a pretty good general plan. I mean, for starting out, you know, as there was none previous to that. Anyways, and so the process had come to me when I was on the board in 1998, the last month that I was on the board in 1998, I was the lone supervisor that argued against going to the consultant process. And first of all, it was, it was a no-brainer for me to argue against because of multi-millions of dollars, which we didn't have. Anyways, a four-to-one vote, the board decided to go forward with the consulting process. Now here it is, that was in 1998, so here it is, we're coming up to eight years late on the general plan update, which should have been completed in 2000. Millions of dollars just went for nothing and basically we had to bring it back. The consultants are still under contract, but we got the planning team and the building planning department and it's, it's moving it forward. Some people criticize, say it's been moving too fast, other people say it should have been done five or six years ago. You know, I kind of was there before it started, now I'm on the tail end, but we're, we're going to have a completed general plan update. By, by law and by definition, it's, it's classified as a minor update. It's not a new general plan, it's an update to the existing general plan. So that brings us up kind of to where we are here in it. Now, there's a lot of things I want to kind of hit on, you know, regulation has changed a lot of, we talk about we want to go back to agriculture and farming and all that and everybody does. And you talk about the localization movement in small farms. When I was a kid and talking, even going back farther than that, the stories of my father and grandfather that, that farmed and ranted here is an example. My father used to raise cattle in the Leightonville Valley and he supplied the meat, him and my grandfather, to all of the stores in Willets and Leightonville. Well, the big three, Cut, Hay, Swift and Armourer come in and said, you know what? The meat industry needs to be regulated. It just wiped out the local guy, you know? Another issue, up at my ranch still, we have the abandoned railroad track going by. They used, we used to ship out, I used to, when I went there, used to ship out cattle on the railroad. Well, they come up with this regulation that says that a cow can't sit on a, in a truck or a transportation car for so many hours. So because the railroad train only moves so many miles per hour, that just wiped out, they tore down all the corrals and everything, wiped out. It was a major income for the railroad. So, you know, we've been a victim of government regulation and stopping things. And I guess to fast forward to this general plan and your recommendations, I don't want government to be continually to be a victim of kind of unintended consequences, you know? And I'm going to back up on a few things, but I'm looking at your regulation here, it says in your recommendation, 311, 313, all land use classifications will include a requirement that a minimum of 25% of the estimated energy usage will be provided by onsite renewable energy. First of all, it says electricity, 2008, that's just next year. Don't you think that's really ambitious? I mean, that's just next year and everybody's got to switch to, you know, a renewable source? That's, you know, I guess the point I'm trying to make here, if you want to push something to get past the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors, at least you better start off with something that's a little closer to doable than that.
You can, you can keep it up, I mean, stay there, John. Let's just have an answer to that.
Well, can I just, can I just, I just brought up the example.
That's new development, though, Johnny.
Well, it doesn't say on that, first of all, and that's another point I have with the next one, it says, "For all developer-created developments." Now, what's a developer-created development? Is that a guy that wants to put two houses? You know, all residential zoning in this county allows for two residences, not just one, two. So if you have a 400-foot, square foot of garden space, especially in a Willets, an area that has a 27% water deficit, is that really, if you're talking about two, two units on one parcel, does that mean that parcel has to have 800 square foot for a farming area or a garden space when there's no water available anyway? These are just things that I'm just trying to bring up to you. I don't think they're going to fly at the planning department and, and I know they're not going to fly at the Board of Supervisors. I think this needs to be, and David brought up the point, you know, of, of kind of backing up and putting things that are doable in there. Ellen brings up an excellent point. I don't think you're going to get one vote that's going to reduce your ag limits from 40 acres to five. I don't think that's going to fly with, with anybody. So, you know, I just want to bring up a couple of those points, but there's a thousand other things on my mind. But, you know, I, I But, you know, I commend you for the process, but I think maybe, you know, some of these are, I think it'd be great if we could mandate and, hey, okay, everybody's gotta be 25 percent off of the grid in the year 2008. Boy, that's, that'd be a great achievement, but does any of you up there really think that that's doable? That's next year. I mean, you know, what do we have for renewable? You know, we don't, up in the Leightonville area, we don't even have natural gas, you know, the gas line stops here in Willets. And this, this is going to be a county, you know? Another point I'd like to make, this general plan, it's more than a, as most plans and policies are what they say, they're just plans and policies. But this is actually really, it comes to be an ordinance, it's a law in the county. So for instance, if this was put into the general plan, the way it's stated, and then you or anybody else, and you wanted to build a second unit on your, on your property or something, you would have to abide by this, you couldn't abide by it. So what would happen is, you would be told right at the counter at the Building and Planning Department, no, you can't abide by a general plan, so it's a no. Now, you can appeal that, you can put up about 2,500 bucks and appeal it to the Planning Commission, the Board of Supervisors, but does it make sense to put something that's undoable in there? You know, there's a lot of unintended consequences, you're talking about some real, these are real intense changes. These are not simple little, you know, and that's why I take this general plan process real serious, because it really affects people, what they're doing with their property and what they're gonna do in the future, you know? And we can all applaud, you know, the work of the localization and all that, but the reality of it is, we have some real water problems, you know, and if we don't start focusing on the, some water, I mean, Willets right now has a study to show that on a dry year, which we're in, their usage is 25, 27 percent over what they have to use. So how can you encourage people to grow trees and plant gardens and stuff when they're facing cutbacks and whatnot? So, you know, we have some real consistencies.
John, there's nobody behind you. If you don't mind just sticking around, why don't we get a couple of your questions responded to, and you can feel them back.
Sure.
Who's Kate?
Okay. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Pinches, for showing up again and for looking at this with a, with a critical eye, yes, exactly. I do wanna say that on 3-1-1, it does say very clearly, "New housing developments," and, you know, I think we all know what a new housing development means. You know, is that reasonable to require?
On 3-1-1, it just says, "All land use classifications will include a minimum of 25 percent of the."
Looking at the wrong one?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's on, that's on trees, that's on trees, for street-lined streets.
Okay, I'm looking at 3-1-1 through 13.
When you put some, I mean, the depth, the first thing you have to do when you put wording in there, your definitions have to be exact, because, you know, somebody said that.
Well, the other thing I wanna say.
The devil's in the details.
The other thing I wanna say is that this, this is a draft, and, you know, it's funny because when we talked about putting this out here, and it was, we were real clear, we wanted to put draft on it, we wanted to make sure that everybody understood that this was a draft, and one of our concerns was that the Board of Supervisors would take this and say, you know, this is not worded correctly, and, you know, this is gonna be law. We understand that, and we're not expecting you to take this.
Yeah, well, this, this won't.
This needs to, this is a guideline.
Yeah, this wouldn't get to the Board of Supervisors.
And we know that.
I'll tell you that right now.
And we know that. And this is a guideline which needs to be put into legal ease.
Yeah.
And needs to be defined very, very clearly, and we understand that as a group.
I think the statement was made earlier that we were forced to work within the aspect of the policy framework.
Yeah, and you had a timeframe you were working with, too.
No, it wasn't just the frame, the time, it was the aspect of how we needed to present this. It couldn't be in a long, drawn-out text of this area and this area. We wanted to, we basically had to go within the framework of the general plan, so we had to create terse statements. We were hoping to be able to have the interaction with the planning department, with the supervisors, with the planning commissioners, to be able to work through this. But I'd like to address, your garden thing is really the idea of green. Let me just, two things, you should have tried it. Three years, major oil companies have been producing 91 percent of what they've been selling. We're in deficit already with oil. It's going up. Soup kitchens, local soup kitchen, has seen a marked increase, families with children and elderly. It's already hitting us. We need to take this action. You're a visionary, you're a leader, you can take this and start looking at these objectively. We need to start moving the county towards the thing where we protect our resources and we start providing in a way of what we know is coming down. That's, I'll step back on that.
Well, it's not a question of what's already come down, it's a question of what has come down. For instance, you talk about in our housing element, okay, we're in the, we basically, the county was sued here in the last few years, and they come up with a, you know, consent decree that the county's gonna do so much. One of the parts of the consent decree is, the county has to come up and designate 50 acres that will be set aside for affordable housing. You know what? We can't do it. You know why? We don't have the infrastructure. We don't have the water. Every site that's, we got lots of sites that says, oh, there's 10 acres in Covelo, and there's 10 acres here, someplace, or five and a five. We can't show where we got the available water.
And use the water?
Well, that's one of the big ones. Sewer has a lot to do with it, but in some areas, there's alternate systems, you can actually deal with the sewer issues because you can do the cluster issues. But water, we can't, you know, what's the, there's an old saying about, you know, this old deal of put, show on paper, water's not working anymore. It's not working with the state, it's not even working locally. So that's, another thing with the general plan, we talk about land use designation. Until we deal with a certificates of compliance issue, we don't even know how many parcels and what size they are out there until every parcel would. Now, the process is, you wanna do something, they research it and see if there's an old patent parcel, and you can develop, split up your land. We don't really know, the only way we know that is somebody comes in as a landowner and says, I want, I want this research and see what we have. We've never done that, so we don't really know, you know? We might think this is 160-acre parcels out here, well, maybe it's in 10 CCs that are 16 acres each. So we don't really know what the, and I've argued for that, never got any support looking into that, it's kinda like nobody wants to talk about it. Talk about the elephant in the room, that's a big grill in the room. But anyways.
Thank you very much, John.
Could I just say one thing about the agricultural policy? Right now, we, it takes about 10 units of fossil fuel to grow one unit of food, and a lot of that is because we are transporting our food so far. So we need to find a way to give everybody an opportunity to grow their own food locally, and this is just, if you can think of another way to do that, I'd be happy to hear it.
Well, there's lots of things, you know, I'm comparing when I was a kid and to now. For instance, right now, if you talk to the fuel companies, they might not say this to you now, but outside of them supplying the gasolines and the trucking for their diesel, they figure that 90 percent of it's going for large generators to grow our number-one agriculture crop. I mean, that's what's going on, a lot of emissions and everything, that's the reality, you know, that's what forward the legalization. But I'm just saying, that's a reality, you know? As far as agriculture, you know, in 1880, wool was Mendocino County's largest crop. The Mendocino County fleece of wool on the Clark Ranch west of Leightonville by Branscombe got the world, in the 1936 World Fair in New York, won the world, it was world-class, it was the blue ribbon for the world, for wool going right here in Mendocino County. Now, we virtually don't have a sheep and a wool industry. One of the reasons is, is regulation, when they come in with the regulations that didn't allow the ranchers to take care of the predators, that put a lot of them out. Now, if the lamb and wool price come back, which it is starting to, there's a real problem because of the uncontrolled dogs. You know, you can't, you can't raise sheep where you have, I'm way out in the middle of the hills, and I get dogs that come for 20 miles and get in my sheep flock, and I get, I'm just saying. So, in agriculture, you know, agriculture kinda tends to be a, it got to be larger scale. Now I see that reduction. I mean, you know, when you go to the store and pay $2, $3 apiece for artichokes, you can grow all artichokes you can, this is a great country for growing artichokes. You know, I see it kinda going that way, but the main impediment for that and encouraging that is, we gotta come up with some more water. You can't tell a tomato plant or an agriculture plant, you can only survive on so much water. They need what they need, you know? And I know there's a lot of people that are opposed to new water development and new storage, but if you're going to, if we're going to do anything with agriculture, we're gonna have to come up with more water. If, if we're not, then line out agriculture and all of these elements, and we'll do without it, but you can't have it both ways, is my point.
Thank you very much. In the interest of ending in eight minutes or close to, I'd like to move to the last section and ask you to be good students and of an interesting time, and to, and this goes for the, for the panelists. Very, very briefly, what were the most important items that were said tonight? What were some of the major things that you learned that you didn't know before that is, that you're gonna take home with you? Very brief little bursts, and if you will, just step up and, and tell us what was a highlight for you. Very brief, no comments, just the highlights.
Very brief, I'm Dave Beebe. This here should be like markup. Everybody should take one of these and mark it up the way they think it should be and turn it back to these guys. Go right through it, just like you in Congress and all, just mark it up where you think it needs something here and there, and then give it back to them.
Thank you. Anybody else? How about up on the, up here? Anybody hear of anything tonight that was just very, very important to them or should be underlined?
What do you think of that, Ryan? Having everybody mark it up and send it back to you.
I think it's a great idea.
I think it's a great idea.
And to go on with what Lanny was saying, I sincerely appreciate everybody's comments here. Pro and con, I think there's been some fantastic information exchanged. Thank you.
If you feel so moved, $2 donation would be wonderfully accepted and appreciated if you would like to take home a copy of this document. If that's too much, take it home anyway.
Who can we send it back to?
Pardon?
Who can we send it back to?
I think you could, would you volunteer to be recipient of all of those documents? Well.
The Well Office.
The Well Office, excellent idea.
And, you guys can pick it up.
The Ready Office, just two blocks down on Commercial.
The petition, Cliff Pollan has volunteered to be the end place of all the petitions, so he may be willing to accept those documents, too, or we could forward to him from wherever.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, keeping the outreach group.
Right, yeah. Be good locally and then.
Brian?
One thing I'm taking away this evening is, just summed up by the expression, "Where there's a will, there's a way." And I think the real question before all of us in this county is, what do we truly want? What do we want to create here in this county that's gonna be a sustainable and a beneficial place for future generations? There are lots of issues, you know? Whenever you make an assessment of what, how things currently are, there's always, there's always obstacles. There's legislation, there are issues, there are pros and cons. I think we have to, in a sense, acknowledge all of those limiting factors, but really take a collective imaginative leap into the future and say, what is it that we truly want as a county? And we've gotta mobilize as many people as possible. I agree with the earlier comment from the, from the panel, that it's all about numbers. And we're initiating here in Willets a water conservation exercise, and I want to see that happen all across the county. It's tied into energy, it's tied into food, and we know there's a huge amount of water loss, you know, through old infrastructure. We've gotta stop repairing and conserving and start to think about the future in a, I think, in a completely new imaginative way. That's what I'm taking away tonight.
Thank you.
There's a general will here.
Tony, what should be underscored?
I just wanna let the planning team know here that I'm gonna send you what the county planning team sent to the supervisors that we need to get behind, all the documents on, this is the policy guide on planning for sustainability, and it really, and there's all these principles, other documents that have gone to the supervisors, we now need to support the planning team to make this apte.
Great, thanks. Patrick?
Just wanna make a few final points from the county's perspective. General, can't stress enough, general plans are not carved in stone, we don't have chisels at the county office, we're not making anything firm, as firm as it may appear. We can't legislate social, we can't legislate behavior, no social engineering. We also likewise can't mandate any particular form of agriculture, but the response to both of those issues is, we can make policies that either encourage what we do want, encourage the marketplace to do what we want to do, encourage the landowners to do what may better suit our needs. We can't just go out and say, you have to do this, but we get to provide the financial and other motivation techniques to do it. We can't make financially infeasible objectives, you know? Our objectives do have to be grounded in both market, in the general sense of the market, as well as what, you know, what people can afford or can't afford to do. Our objections also, our objectives for any plan have to be realistic. They have to be realistic in timeframe, they have to be realistic to the resources we have available or the resources that we could make available. At the same point, we also need to be visionaries about this, so we can't, we can't just say we can't do it because it costs too much, we have to look at what, what the issues are and what we need to do to get there. Finally, the process works, the, from this to this is a process that went from the Energy Working Group to the Mendocino County Planning Staff, to the Planning Commission, and ultimately to the Board of Supervisors. Input from one, necessarily make it verbatim into the final document, but it is one step of the way. Other steps of the way are community attendance at both the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors meetings, and again, I might, must remind you, the 28th of June and the 19th of July are the next two Planning Commission meetings on the general plan, tentatively the 24th of July for the Board of Supervisors. And finally, the issue of energy is not the only issue we have facing us out there. Water's important, economic development is important, and all of those play into what would need to be a viable general plan. And so we are looking at all of those issues, and in many cases, the issue of energy and water do affect what kind of economy we produce here, have here locally, and the choices we make as a legislative body and how the administration carries it out affect what kind of, will affect what the general plan will ultimately look like in the end.
Thank you very much. Looks like it's nine o'clock. I did hear Patrick say, "It's not engraved in stone." I heard John Pinches said, "General plan is law." That's a little disconnect for me, so I'm gonna underline that. I hope that some of you here will encourage or help to create other town hall meetings like this, or different, but on the subject of the importance of the community becoming involved in the general plan and letting the supervisors know what, how you feel. If I can help in any way with other town hall meetings throughout the county, I'll be glad to do that. A DVD of this particular meeting will be available after tomorrow. If you're interested in one, it'd be very, very reasonable. Again, if you can afford it, $2 would be greatly appreciated. I wanna remind you that on the 16th of July, Mariah Gallarden will be back here in Willets and will share with us some insight into syndicated talk show radios interviewing, and the subject that particular night will be on energy. If you're interested in what the Humboldt County has done with regard to holding the corporations at bay through their Measure T, see me afterwards. I think that's it. I thank you all for coming. I think this is an important process for us all. I wanna thank Greg Conney from the City Council for being here, John Pinches, and John Schaefer is also here from Hopland, he also sits and helped put this document together. I wanna thank you for coming, and all of you who came and participated and who came and listened. Thank you all for coming. Good night.
Good night, good day.
And good luck.
Good luck.
[applause][1783.15]